I'd like to call the plant commission meeting to order on Tuesday, August 24th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Janelle, could you please take a roll call?
Berto.
Here.
Gretzsmacher.
Here.
Shumoy.
Here.
Zaskey.
Here.
Schmitz.
Here.
Has Nate arrived yet? Bell?
Nate is excused tonight.
Okay.
Oh, my gosh, I pulled up our agenda for tomorrow. Oh, my gosh. Comments, correspondence, and concerns from the public. Is there anybody joining us tonight that would like to address the plant commission on a non-agenda issue?
Oh, hello. My name is Villaswechuk. I personally have property for the tomorrow's meeting. And I just wanted to let you know that they looked at the corrections in the code, and for me, it's kind of looking that after, if it will go through the way it is now, my property will be completely worthless. And I will be locked in, not be able to do anything with it. The only suggestion I have for Village of Sister Bay, instead of scratching off completely motel, hotel condominiums, maybe we should consider making the maximum units so that somebody can come in and build seventeen unit building on the tiny lot. Instead of that, we can maybe save seven units or nine at the most. That will be it from me.
Okay, thank you.
Doesn't look like there's anyone else.
Okay. Is there an emotion, a motion to approve the agenda?
I so moved.
Motion by Gretzsmacher. I'll second. All those in favor respond with an I.
I.
Posed. Carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion by Zaskey.
Second.
Second by Schmitz. All in favor respond with an I.
I.
I. Posed. Carried. Because I had the wrong agenda pulled up, Bo can.
I can read it.
Thank you.
Agenda item number one, consider a motion to convene into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five sub one, sub G to confer with legal counsel for the governmental body who is regarding or rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is likely, or which it is or is likely to become involved. Underneath that bullet point discussion regarding the opinion from legal counsel that pertains to potential zoning code amendments.
Motion by Berto, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Gretzsmacher. Roll call. Berto, yes?
Gretzsmacher, yes.
Zaskey, yes.
Shumoy, yes.
Schmitz, yes.
Janelle, do you want to stop the recording?
Yep.
Okay, at six twenty-six, I'll make a motion to return to open session. Motion by Berto.
Second.
Second.
Second by Gretzsmacher. Roll call. Berto, yes? Gretzsmacher, yes?
Zaskey, yes.
Schmitz, yes.
Okay, we're now in open session. Bo, can you read the next agenda item, please?
I can. Agenda item number four, discussion regarding the tent regulations that are contained in section sixty-six point zero three zero two of the zoning code for the Village of Sister Bay. Consider a motion for action if appropriate.
Are you going to share your screen?
Yes, give me one moment here. Do you want me to pull up that section in the zoning code?
Whatever you want to do.
It's on page five of your packet, Bo, if that helps.
Okay, perfect. Okay, can everyone see this?
Whoa.
Yes. Okay, so I just want to give a little background on this. So there's been a couple instances this summer post nineteen emergency declaration where a few businesses have attempted to request a temporary tent permit for an event that they may have going on on their property. It came to the plant commission chair's attention that these temporary tents or temporary uses are only allowed for village sanctioned events and not private events.
Can I ask a question about number eight that we're looking at? So if we're talking about tents specifically, and all that this relates to is tents, then why does section eight refer to truck, trailer, and table as well as tents?
We just wanted to highlight the entire section that was referring to temporary uses because a temporary tent falls under the temporary use.
So that, so it would, it would apply to all those conditions, essentially anywhere in the business district or surrounding area. If I'm looking at six six oh three oh oh and all the various sections. So my question is, if I'm reading this right, then one of the things this would prevent, for instance, is we finally have somebody who has purchased and planning on opening up a retail spot in the building across from the waterfront park, which quite frankly, is going to be a challenge to them in a promotional slash signage way, just from the design of that building and whatnot. We're basically telling, we're basically saying that during the height of the season, if they wanted to highlight the fact that they have beach toys for families getting ready to go into the park, that they can't set a table up outside of their store on that patio slash sidewalk where it would not be harming anyone because nobody would be using it as a passageway?
They would be allowed to do that under outdoor displays.
Yep, that's considered a sidewalk sale.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to clarify that because when I read eight and look at all the zoning districts that this oh three oh encompasses, I just wanted to make sure about that. Thank you for the clarification.
Not having outdoor displays in front of me, is there a limitation on them?
Um, basically, the limitation is, you know.
Days, I believe.
Fourteen days in a row in a calendar year and a season?
You can, you, just like On Deck puts out, you know, or Yenny puts out a couple of mannequins. On Deck has different things outside. Those are the outdoor displays that I'm talking about that you are allowed to do. Let me see how we have it defined here.
It's on page one oh seven, I believe.
Yeah, there's no pages on, page numbers on what was printed out.
Okay, outdoor displays are allowed on a regular basis in a B one district and do not require permits. Outdoor displays in a regular basis in a B two and B three districts do not require permits. Just going through here, there's a says, no permit will be required for sidewalk sales in any business district, but no more than twelve of such sales will be allowed in one calendar year. However, the appearance of merchandise displayed during a sidewalk sale must be to the proportionate size, just going through this. Outdoor displays shall not extend more than fifty percent of the building. Signs are allowed. The display area should not inhibit the use of parking.
So you can have some attractive things outside in front of, in front of your business that this would not encumber, Rob.
Okay, that's, that's great news. I just yeah, okay. Thank you. Trying to remember, where did I see how long you've got before you have to take it back down? I thought maybe there was another document. Because we wanted to say forty-eight hours, right?
Yeah, we did change something. I.
That's, I think that's another code.
That was something else, I believe. That didn't, that didn't pertain to merchandise displaying.
Got it. I guess the only other question I, or comment as I was going through this was, you know, in, in the spirit of language that could get us in trouble, what is a dangerous animal? Do we, do we, do we need to make that more difficult, or is it okay, just as tigers and snakes and pumas and?
I don't know, I'm not, I'm not personally too concerned about that.
Okay, I just.
So, Bo, what are you proposing?
So the discussion came up that temporary tents should only be allowed from the approval of the parks property and streets committee pertaining to an approved village event on the dates of a village event.
So it's that, do you have proposed wording?
No, not yet. I wanted to get plan commission discussion before I put anything down.
This kind of all started with the Door Hotel, I don't know, a month or so ago. And they had two tents on their property with a lot of illegal signage during what was it? What was, oh.
Plain air.
Plain air and the brick party. And the village gave them a permit for those particular days, but they violated the sign ordinance knowingly because Bo had that conversation with them. And it really is supposed to be with a village sponsored affair and not, because every time a one day event was going on, like the goat parade, let's say, you could have everybody in town ask for a tent permit because there's a goat parade. And that truly was not the intention of, of when this was drafted, and I don't believe in subsequent conversations that we've had since then that that's the direction that we would like to see. Maybe I'm wrong.
I agree with your point there, Denise.
So, Bo.
I agree also, just out of curiosity, the, that lovely wedding on Saturday, how, that tent permit goes through a different cycle?
Yeah, yes, that's, that's a rental of the Marina Park.
Got it, okay.
And permission has to be granted by the parks committee for people to do that.
So it's not a village sponsored activity, but it's approved.
Right, it's a private event on Villa Joan property.
All right, thank you.
So, Bo, why don't you just come up with wording, propose that next time, and then we'll see how it inserts, how it reads, and we'll have further discussion at that point in time.
I can do that. I just wanted to have discussion first, okay?
Okay. Read our next agenda item, please.
Agenda item number five, conducting of a plant commission work session at which proposed revisions to several sections of the zoning code, chapter sixty-six of the municipal code for the Village of Sister Bay will be reviewed, consider a motion for action if appropriate. Okay.
So you'll start sharing your screen with page one again?
Yep.
And just David caught that thing about impervious surface when what we really wanted was pervious surface. And I did some Googling last night, and there is concrete that can be pervious surface. So I'm wondering if we don't change that to just green space as we get to those different places in the code. It's something that I, you know, just like everybody to, to think about because there would be ways to you know, have it right up to the property line because they can prove that it's pervious, but I don't think it's what our intention was again.
Good grab.
Okay, so Bo, do you just want to start taking us through?
I just want to go.
Changes that have been made to it and.
Yep, that's what I want to do is highlight some of the changes. So the first step here, these are all previously discussed. So under use restrictions, temporary uses, that's following officials, that was including the plant commission chair. We changed the dates to less than, instead of ten days, it was forty-eight hours.
Okay.
There was some removal. So we did actually remove real estate sales. Added farmers markets. There's a couple other revisions. I'm just going to keep going until someone tells me to stop. For lot dimensions, we were able to create tables, and I did share that with everyone in the email. I don't know if everyone had a chance to take a look at that.
I have not, Bo.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. If you want, I can pull them up. So this is a separate document, just so you know, this is a word document with the addition of the dimensional standards table. So here's the B, or the R one district lot standards that will be included in the code. It reads as follows, it's a lot simpler to read and understand from an outsider looking in. And I'm just going to keep scrolling to give you.
Bo, can you go back to the first page of that for a minute and look at number six quickly, please? The first page. Yeah, there it is. You just went past, yeah. Or that, well, I guess it'd be the next page. Yeah, so, all right. Why is it that we have some instances of solar collectors attached to the principal structure and some instances of solar energy collectors erected as an accessory structure? Why not all one or the other?
So this is not the edited version that we've gone on so far. This was just a version to give you an example of what the dimensional standards would look like.
In the packet tonight, in the work session material, it appears in, in both formats. At times, it says solar collectors attached to the principal structure, and at times, it says solar collectors erected as an accessory structure.
Right, we have separated them because if they are permitted use, if they are attached to the building, they are a conditional use if they are freestanding. Because the plant commission, when the plant commission had this conversation, they, if it was not attached to the building, they wanted to know exactly where they were going to be placed and ha, and have that knowledge through a conditional use permit instead of just a permitted use.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Okay. Um, I can keep going through the other districts to give you an idea, but essentially the tables are just a simpler way to understand lot dimension standards for the lot, the principal structure, accessory structures, so forth. Does anyone have any questions on that? And that was included in the email, so you do have a copy of this in case you have you want time to further review this and ask questions at a later meeting, that would be appropriate as well.
But in, in the spirit of a question I asked before, are, is it our intent to move away from setting what size the houses and just setting the, how much green space we want or open space?
Yes, that was a conversation when Nate was cutting and pasting in one of our last meetings on all the things that we wanted to address after we finished this document, and that was one of, of the topics of conversation that we will address next when this is finished.
Got it, okay.
So this may, this may change, but for now I, I think it's mu, it's much better. And, and we've always talked about going more to something like this for ease.
Yep. Okay. I'm going to pull the work session document back up. So to give you an idea of the lot dimensions, the table will be included in that section. Hey, tell me when to stop. I know that there's some edits here on the numbers. Don't worry about that. That'll all get changed in the final document. Okay, so there was a question here.
There's, I think there's a bunch of stuff that has to go out.
Okay, so, yeah, guest user said need to delete all words in purple. I'm not.
It was purple then, it was. I mean, this didn't make any sense why there's stuff in the middle there. It didn't.
So that's because this is a, a document where we're making tracked changes. So what you're seeing is the deletion of language and then the inclusion of new language. So when this all gets accepted and approved, it will be one clean document with the, with all the strike throughs gone.
So on a particular parcel belongs where? That was, that's what didn't make sense to me. If you look at the, it's in blue right now. If it is on a particular parcel, where does that hang on to?
Those quirks, see, those pens is recorded. Officer, I serve these.
Line D. Yeah, but there's nothing there. It just, it's like a, yeah. It looks strange.
So probably the covenants and restrictions prior to the issuance of any building occupancy or conditional use permit. Oh, see, this is on a second dwelling unit. So all of that goes, the whole thing goes away. So whatever, that, whatever we have added in blue needs to be deleted because.
Okay, yep.
So we can just do that. Everything is gone then.
Okay.
Well, but the blue is, well, it, did we add the whole entire thing? Because we did not have that before, did we?
No.
So scroll back up a little bit. So if we added it and now we're deleting it, it doesn't even need to be in there because it wasn't in the code that we're changing.
Correct. This is, this is a little more intricate, so we'll have to go through and delete it physically, the blue. But for the sake of time, I don't think we have enough time to watch me go through that.
Okay.
Got it.
Okay, so once again, lot areas and width, tables will be inserted. Okay, there's another guest user questions. We do not allow churches, so should we strike two? So we should strike two. It looks like there was a change here. Yep, looks like it was deleted.
Okay. I have a question on that page, Bo. On G three, detached garage.
Okay.
A detached garage shall be architecturally compatible. Is, does that mean it should be visually similar?
Correct.
Is because I, architecturally compatible, everyone will infer that's what it means.
Jeff has his hand raised.
That's a great question, Mr. Zaskey, and unfortunately, that term is fraught with peril again. So architecturally compatible is interpreted to mean if you have a brick house, it has to be a brick garage. That's why I'm wondering. Cedar shake, vertical or cedar shake siding, then the garage has to have cedar shake siding. The terminology that I think most, this is not for the Village of Sister Bay, that's for you to decide, but the terminology that most communities lean towards is something along the lines of visually compatible with or complementary to. It's a little bit more wishy-washy. It's a little bit more flexible if you want to look at from the positive, but it allows you to say, you know, something, if you have a house that has horizontal wood siding and you're proposing a detached garage that has vertical steel sheeting, no. But if you convert it, you know, if you use similar colors, maybe you're not using cedar shake, but it's compatible. It looks like it works well together. So I, the, when you get into the architectural elements, it becomes scary. Well, unless of course, that's the intent, right? If the intent is to be incredibly what, directive in terms of the style of the accessory structure, does that also apply to, you know, one hundred and twenty square foot garden sheds put in the backyard and all that kind of thing, so.
Well, my garden shed does match my house. But I don't, I don't think that, I can't believe that the plant commission would interpret that in the most strictest of ways.
I wasn't thinking from the standpoint of the plant commission. I was thinking from the standpoint of somebody coming in with a situation just like Jeff outlined. And that if you, if there's some way you can clarify, it's, you know, no, you're not, that's not, that would not be visually similar, then it's really accounting for what we wanted to account for. That was my point.
Well, we can change.
Probably the biggest concern would be the interpretation of the court, if it's in any way illusory.
So Jeff, what, what was your wording? We can just change it right now.
Visually compatible.
Okay.
And or complementary, something, something that says what I believe the village's intent is without getting into something that's unnecessarily rigid.
So visually compatible and complementary. Okay.
This is doing us.
That sounds good.
Sorry, it was visually in what?
And complimentary. Visually compatible, no, you're putting.
Sorry.
For what it's worth, Bo, I could never do this. I could never do this in real.
My computer, my computer is delayed. Yeah, my computer's delayed, so when I make changes, it's really hard to keep up with it. Okay. Moving on, looks like there was some more changes in purple. Says, is this appropriate?
So we're talking about R one sidewalks, not less than three feet and width, shall be provided to all building entrances connecting the building to the required parking areas or driveways. I know very few homes that have sidewalks. There are some, but not all. And so is in an R one district, I mean, my driveway goes right up to, to my steps. I have no sidewalk. So is it appropriate for us in the R one district to have that in there?
No.
I mean, if, if they can get, if they don't want to put in a sidewalk, if they want to put in a bark path or have a grass path or whatever, do we, do we care?
I don't think so.
So I thought then maybe we should strike it.
This is the same thing for number, number three? Oh, Jeff has his hand raised again.
Well, because it said all the buildings to the public street. So if they have a shed, do they have to have a sidewalk from their shed?
So just principal structure?
And, and do we, do we want to have say over that? I'm, I'm thinking not. It's their, it's their private property. How they get to the sidewalk, I guess, is up to them. How they get to the sidewalk, I guess, is up to them, i- is my opinion.
Jeff had his hand raised, just so.
I had Jeff.
The only comment I have, and first of all, I think principal structures is the intent here, um, but the three foot paved is an ADA requirement. Now, that doesn't apply to private property, but it is something to consider because woodchips and the other alternatives are not ADA compatible.
Right, but this is in the R one district, which is single family.
Yes, ma'am, understood, but at some point, someone else buys the house and do they have to pay to put in a, again, I'm not suggesting that you require it. I'm just saying that's the, that's probably the reason. You're good, a- as, as all of you probably noticed, there are some interesting things in this zoning code. Um, and it's, i- if, if I may, it's, it's the result of a zoning code that was created for a city. Being superimposed upon the village of Sister Bay, so you'll bump into these weird things quite frequently. As again, you all probably know better than I.
Okay.
So I added, question on number four. On this, right, the next point. Street trees shall be provided. By who? And why are we saying provided? That makes it sound like the village is going to provide them. Are we providing trees? Or is the person doing the development paying to put the trees in at the points we say they need to be put in?
Uh, no, we, the village is not providing them, so it should be, uh, planted by the owner or developer.
Did you hear me, Bo?
Yep, I'm just trying to make that change.
Apparently I had a screen freeze.
Okay, is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
It's funny, once you go through it with a fine tooth comb, still what we all find.
Okay, so there's a question mark by a guest user on indoor institutional.
What is that?
I'm looking it up to see if we have it defined. We do not have it defined.
I lost everybody there. I, I'm wondering if it got, if it's a casualty of cut and paste. It sounds like there should be, there's something else there or it shouldn't be.
No, that, that's been there for a really long time, David.
Really, okay.
Yeah. Um, so we're in the R one. Okay, seeing that we don't know what it is, then maybe we should scratch it.
So is indoor institutional, and this could be wrong, but. Hospitals, sanitariums, nursing homes, mental hospitals. Jails, prisons, reformatories, all are considered indoor institutional.
Well, that shouldn't be in R one.
Isn't, isn't hurt side in R one?
Uh, but, uh, we have that defined differently, um, CBRF, um, in, in our definitions that is allowed in R one.
You bring up a good point, Denise, I don't think, uh, when I was going through this and I kept running into CBRF, I thought if I'm the layman and I'm trying to understand this and interpret it for what I want to do. Should there be a, a definition for that? Like in the beginning somewhere, because.
Well, I think we have it also, is it also? It's, is it nursing homes slash CBRF? It, it's linked with something else. Yes, nursing home. A place where five or more persons who are not related to the operator or administrator reside, receive care or treatment.
So it's right here, just so you don't, Mary Kay, under conditional uses license community slash CBRF.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm just stating that the layperson looking at this is going to be reading through and, and asking what does CBRF stand for and why isn't it defined? Uh, you know, in the beginning, also known as, or, or here and after referred to as.
So we can, right, uh, I think we should add it to our definitions, but I think we should also then get rid of just the initials and community based. Community based. I'm trying to blank.
Residential facilities.
Residential facility.
Thank you.
Did I cut off before? Did you guys hear my question about the trees and being provided?
Yeah, we, we made that change.
Okay, alright.
You can do it like this.
Yep.
There you go.
Thank you.
Okay, that comment up on seven. I apologize, but I was on my fourth cup of coffee when I was going through this. Usual and customary has bitten me in the backside in my prior life.
I think that's in there, David. Because we cannot come up with every single accessory use. Um, listed, and that is why that is, that is in there.
Okay.
An act, wait, Bo, go back, because I must have missed that under R one, because I had changed it other places. Um. Uses as determined by the zoning administrator and the plan commission chair and get rid of his or her designee.
Jeff has his hand raised.
Jeff, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm looking at the words on the page.
Okay, I can play game show host, that's no problem.
Okay.
If I may make a suggested change, um, from usual and customary uses to customarily incidental to. Any use customarily incidental to is the language that I think you're looking for. As I agreed, uh, usual and customary is problematic.
I wish I knew what page we were on.
Okay, so any other accessory?
Any, any use.
Yeah.
Customarily incidental to.
And you want me to remove other?
And the, uh, second accessory. Or the word accessory. I guess the word two also, I threw an extra two in, sorry. Two twos is one too many?
Customary incidental to the above permitted uses is determined by the zoning administrator and plan commission chair. Alright, do we want to move on? Or Denise, are you still looking at this?
No, I'm okay.
Bo, you might want to do a search for the terms, the, the phrase that you removed throughout the document, right? I'm gonna add a note to that just to save some time, so. And again, since there's a bit of a break, um, jumping in, there's lots of references to CBRFs and licensed family daycare homes and all that. Um, one option would be to just go to community living arrangements as your term. Because that's covered under state statutes and you can include a definition in the definition section if you'd like. Or you could just say as defined in, you know, the appropriate state statutes, but community living arrangements might be a easier, more convenient way to address it. But that might be a future change, is something for discussion.
That sounds excellent.
Okay.
Are we in, are we still in R one?
No, we're just passing R three large lot residence. Hey, so, comment, this should be deleted, the amended ordinance. There's two of them within the conditional uses.
Oh, I, I put that in there because they both pertain to, um. Assembly halls. I'm asking the question, Bo, I'm, I'm.
Sorry.
Saying that it should be deleted, I'm asking the question. Because if you look back up. In the end, the code where it talks about all the different amendments. That has happened. And you pull up, so what's the first one, twelve, twelve, seventeen?
Yep.
Okay, it's, um. That. It references, um, that we changed the zoning code in such a fashion that assembly hall halls are allowed as a conditional use on parcels, blah, blah, blah. In the R three district and the entire CS one and B one districts. And then the third one done in nineteen repealed that. So do they, do they still need to be there?
Lot of their counterintuitive to one another.
Okay. One sixty-one was deleted.
Say that again?
Line one sixty-one.
I can't see. I can't see which lines.
Yeah, the number.
Okay, here we go, one sixty-one.
Again, for churches, because we're only allowing them in. B one now.
Yep.
We have that architecturally compatible showing up again on one sixty-eight that we need to address. With the same term from before.
Just to save time, all of these things are in all of the, our districts, so we're going to have to go through and take out trees provided and, and.
Okay.
Things we made.
Okay, that's fine, Mary Kay, thank you.
Right, those are, are all going to have to do a control F to find everything, so the verbiage is the same everywhere.
Sorry about that.
No, no, that's fine, we just need to make a list. So on line one seventy-one. Oh no, never mind, that was fine.
Sorry, I'm just writing a note here.
I'm also writing some notes, I don't know if I've caught everything, but we can combine ours.
Okay, just continuing to scroll through here. R four small lot, it looks like there were several changes. A guest user commented ditto earlier comment unusual and customary.
Yeah, I, I put in there a couple of spots, so you've, you've covered it.
So I'm actually going to leave that comment in there because I can go back. Okay, total minimum floor area was removed. This is in the R four district.
That's because it's a duplicate.
Yep.
And the numbers were different, which made no sense.
Okay. CS one countryside district. Same comment, I'll go through and make that change. Okay, there's a comment here, if CS one is deleted, the whole paragraph should be deleted.
I mean. That's what I think, because we're in the CS one, we don't care about R one and R three. Although, did that just take out the above? Line two seventy-five also?
Shouldn't have.
Oh no, that was already taken out, no, it's good.
Okay, business district.
I have a question right there, Bo.
Okay.
Point number two of item two, general business district. Development that maintains the village's traditional small town appearance. Uh, after recent developments culminating with the door hotel, I just philosophically am challenged to say. Uh, we should tell anyone that development has to maintain the village's traditional small town appearance because. Clearly, the recent spat of developments culminating with door hotels have not done that.
Well, and I also brought that up on page. Um, we're at the very beginning of the code, um, and referencing everything to our architectural standards because. This plan commission has approved things that do not reflect the architectural standards that have, um. Been determined and are in the code, so I think that's a conversation, um. For a future and how we address that, Rob.
And I think that along with that, we have to include point number four on here. I mean. Enhancing the village's historic architecture has, you know. All recent developments culminating with door hotel are in complete opposition to that phrase in theory. So. Me, yeah.
You have to quit attacking individual businesses by, by name in, in these meetings. These businesses were duly approved by this commission.
I, I, I'm not, I'm not attacking them, Mary Kay, I'm not, I'm not saying anyone did anything wrong by approving them, I'm saying.
We keep giving up specific examples of things we don't like, we all don't like them, let's not name them by names out of fear of litigation.
Oh, I, I'm not saying I don't like, what I don't like is the code saying. This is what we want to maintain, but we don't want to maintain that, so why should we even say we want to maintain it? I'm all for bringing more businesses in like we brought in in the last few years, but I don't understand. How we bring those businesses in and then say, oh, people, if you come here, we're, we're wel- we have welcomed people. Not maintaining a traditional small town appearance, and I don't have a problem with that, but why would we keep saying that? We're welcoming people to not enhance historic architecture. Then why?
Why don't we add whenever possible, the way other communities have, whenever possible?
That would, that would work for me.
I think that's a bigger conversation I'd like to have at a future date.
Okay, thank you.
I did add something there, Bo, um, under twenty-five medical, dental and optical clinics.
Question right there, Bo, number thirty-eight, that we just went past. If we keep travel agency, do we want travel agencies in there? Because what we're saying is. We would be okay with a regional sales office for VRBO or Airbnb to. Set up shop. Set up shop.
And we're in B1, correct?
Yes.
I think that's okay in B1.
To go back to B1, just to your previous comment Denise adding optical, would we also ask, add cosmetic? As such procedures are becoming more and more common?
Sure. Or dermatological, or, yeah, anything like that.
Okay, just continuing to go through here. Green space, this was the impervious surface section.
Right, so do we want to change the setback area shall be? The setback area surface shall be green space? I mean, I guess it's a, it's a conversation for us to have, I mean, that's what we were kind of looking for. But with researching different products out there, it can still be concrete or a variety of other. Things, which I don't believe was our intention, so green spaces is, I think, very clear.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, because even though I brought it up, I'm now remembering we had a very special. Parking lot at MSW that was technically pervious, but it was some bizarre asphalt, so. Good.
Is that general consensus to change that?
Jeff has his hand raised.
Okay.
Yeah, if I could jump in, this is just a sidebar. No disrespect to my engineering friends out there, but there is no such thing as pervious concrete, there is no such thing as pervious asphalt. They last for about a year. And then in order to maintain their, their, their perviosity, they have to be vacuumed regularly. And nobody does it, no, and I mean, nobody vacuums these things. So really what you end up with is stuff that is basically concrete one year, 18 months after you, so. I agree that removing the term impervious is beneficial for the village.
Okay, I'll make sure that that's uniform.
Okay, shell. You need to get rid of the A on an, shall be green space.
Thank you.
I have a question on special standards, F number two, that's just about to come up, Bo, when you get there.
Okay. Where did you say that, Rob? Sorry, I was writing.
Okay, F2, new apartment and it's currently says. New apartment and seasonal employee housing building shall comply. Why would we want to say seasonal, why wouldn't we want to say and employee housing? Why do we want to throw seasonal in there? It would be any employee housing, I would think, right?
How about if we have both?
You mean seasonal and year round?
Sure.
Yeah, some, somehow to clarify so that you can't have somebody who would be year round and say I'm exempt, that only applies to seasonal.
Jeff has his hand raised.
Jeff.
Sorry, Bo. You may want to make a note to come up with the definition for green space, because it doesn't appear to be one in the ordinance.
Okay.
Fine greenspace, thank you.
And also, we need to get rid of in that same paragraph, the second congregate housing. And then add again after that, and you, seasonal and year round.
Okay. Moving on, this is just for make sure, this is B2. The entire accessory residential use.
So here's where we can have that discussion. And if we just want to take it off the code temporarily and work on it. When we're done with this, along with the other issues and. Come up with something that, that works better.
And we take an allowed use off the books without a public hearing?
Going to be at a public hearing, so yeah.
I, I, that makes me super nervous Denise.
I, I just don't want to be caught with something that we don't want again. And I'd rather err on the side of caution for six months. Anybody else want to chime in?
I am in favor of taking out items. That we want to deal with, but at the same time, and, and then coming up with a schedule. That maybe we make public and say that over the course of the next six months. We are going to be addressing the code in its entirety. Round one, these are the areas we're looking at, round two, we're gonna be looking at this, round three. And with a caveat that occasionally we're gonna find language issues, like, I mean, we could go through this document. Every day this week and probably come up with more words, but I think maybe if we say what our intention is over the next six months, whatever the timeframe is. Then we can pull out all the stuff that could bite us who were not careful.
Yeah, I like it, I, you know, various, I mean, just right now, it's just kind of, you know. Generic in the agenda items, but we can be very specific for people who would have an interest. With property or a structure or a business that may be impacted and they can chime in and hear the conversation and. Have input and. I like it. I mean, that's also why we have a public hearing, but I think also getting people in. In the process is, is also very helpful.
Denise, this is what worries me, there are people who are coming forward in regards to the moratorium stating that they had had conversations with the village. That they had produced documents, that they had multiple conversations and that uses are being taken away. That, that they weren't properly noticed or, or they felt misled. I, I really don't think we should be, without making the public aware of things. Taking things just unilaterally out of the code and saying, you know, be, because unless somebody has. Due diligence in the notice, what if somebody does come forward again and says, well, you know, we've always heard that you want. Commercial on the first floor and something else on the second floor, and we have this great plan and, and we've talked about it, we've come. Over the last five years on two occasions, I, I can just see that happening because it's happening. And that, those conversations have been had.
Well, we, we've taken a lot of things out of the code, we've taken out a lot of permitted uses. And conditional uses out of the code already.
When you say permitted uses. I mean, we. There, there are grandfathered uses, and I'm just using the example that I'm, I'm, I'm using right now.
I, I don't know what example you're talking about.
On the, the discussion that I just used as to taking additional language out of here. Without noticing people that there would be a big change to the zoning code. What if somebody shows up tomorrow to, to talk to Bo about this and it's in the discussion phase? I guess that's what I'm looking for clarification for. If we are just talking about this right now and it has not been adopted, it is still an allowed use.
That is correct, yes, yes.
Jeff has his hand up.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Um, I, thank you, I think Mary Kay has some good points. One thing to keep in mind is anybody who approaches the city in any formal way, not a preliminary discussion, but submits any sort of application. Whether it be conceptual or, or for, again, a formal application. Regarding any use, including the use of, you know, the residential use of a two-story structure, the second story of a two-story structure. The, the moment they do that, the clock starts ticking, but the clock starts ticking under the existing regulation, so they are protected. Before any of these changes can be made, I think as Denise mentioned a, a moment ago. A public hearing has to be noticed, all of the specific changes or recommend changes have to be included within that public hearing. Testimonies provided, et cetera, so everybody's gonna be informed. Although you can't always lead a horse to water, everybody's gonna be informed of that process, so. But I don't, I honestly don't have any issue with removing permitted uses, I think that's a good thing, I think it's a good thing to go through a zoning code. Identify permitted uses that don't exist within the community. And certainly those that you would prefer not to see in the community, even if there are some, and get rid of them and turn them into non-conforming uses. But I think the main concern, and, you know, again, I, I wasn't party to the conversation that Denise and Bo had earlier today. But the main concern with allowing mixed use, commercial and residential, commercial and first floor residential and the second. Is you have to be, you have to prepare yourself. For the potential that every one of those second floor, second floor residential uses will be a short-term rental. Every single one, that's the, I think that's the main concern that planners and attorneys have regarding mixed use. Particularly in high tourist communities.
And just like when we started the moratorium, there were projects that were already in the pipeline that continue in the pipeline.
Correct, anyone who has spoken to me regarding a use before the moratorium has been allowed to continue. Anyone who has spoken to me after has been reminded that there's a moratorium been placed and they must wait until moratorium ends.
Is that anyone who's spoken to you and also had information related to? Such as drawings and plans, or simply had a verbal discussion with you?
That's anyone who came to me with formal drawings and plans and/or a permit.
Okay. That's what I thought.
So. We need to determine if there's a consensus to temporarily delete this. Marge, you're, you're fine with deleting, temporarily deleting it?
Yes.
Rob?
Yep, I'm fine with it.
Mary Kay?
I'm just going to err on the side of caution and dissent.
Okay. All right, and I'm in favor of it, so. We will remove it.
Okay, I will do the green space later, I see that's here, that'll be in all the districts. Once again, deleting mixed use.
Did, did we pass side yard setbacks? Number three.
Right here, yes.
I thought I had a note there.
No.
Put up, I put up a comment. Okay, so we're in, what, what section are we in?
B2.
B2, okay, well, my comment did not show up, I don't know why. So I had notated that in the B3 district, we have a six-foot side yard setback. And. This is larger in the B2, which really has even smaller lots than the B3. So should we consider changing that 10-foot? Side setback to six mirroring downtown?
Daring to the zoning map. Sure. I mean, our goal is, is that we want it to someday look like B3.
So I think on even smaller lots in the B2, six just makes more sense. And would give somebody a little extra square footage then to possibly do something.
So Jeff, just so, if, if we move forward on this, we'll have to amend the table, just to add that.
It's yours to do with whatever you choose.
So I also deleted, crossed out 6B, so if we did delete the other, then that goes away. Okay.
Hey, it says, there's a comment here for one and two family dwellings, this was zoned out in 2010, I'm guessing you'd like this to be deleted then?
Well, doesn't that make sense?
Okay, mixed use development, so we just agreed to delete this.
Well, it's already crossed out, oh, I, now, I'm sorry, never mind.
This, I have to delete.
Yep.
Okay. B3 downtown. Okay, so the same thing here for the accessory residential use. I will change the green space. Okay, this says this needs to be undeleted.
Right, if both parties agree to a zero-foot side setback, creating a budding. What's in green needs to be undeleted, right?
Yeah, correct, so we can just do this. Says, does this make sense? On B and C.
It doesn't make sense to me.
Agreed.
So I think B and C should be deleted.
Right, deleting mixed use again. Okay, general definitions.
I did change awning.
Roof-like structure of the permanent nature which projects from the wall of a building.
I don't think it should overhang the street right of way. I don't think it should overhang the street right of way. Especially with our, our snow plowing.
Okay, sounds like no one asked any comments. We'll move on. A commercial looks like owner-renter that was added before. Hey, another comment. Should we make, should we add words for onsite management's under condominium transient?
So, so in some of the other areas, we're saying there's got to be the X amount of hours a day, somebody there.
Right, and that, that it was, it had to be under one entity.
Correct.
So should we just, should we look up that other verbiage and?
I'm trying to remember. I'm, it's, it's, I think it's under hotel condominium.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Oh, we're going to add, I can just copy and paste this. The staff member must be on site. You just want me to copy this?
Sure.
Well, do we have to say something about the degree or the frequency to which those transient rentals take place in those?
Well, and I think that was Bo, I think that was Bo's comment. Do we need to expand the definition of condominium transient? And, and I thought I typed in there for 365 days per year. I mean, it's transient. It's.
And there's no minimum stay.
Correct.
Okay.
I changed something under formula business.
I can't see where you made that change.
Oh, this is rather odd. Okay, never mind. It's different than what, than what was printed out. Okay. Uh, basically it was one word. I got rid of the, the word three. Cause it said that what I have printed out says, which satisfies at least two with the following three descriptions, but there were only two descriptions.
Maybe you tracked changes off and you actually took it out?
Maybe. At least two. Maybe. Accidentally, but I thought it, there, it, it's always on.
Well, it could have been, but just because this was printed directly, what you have is exactly what this document is up until today.
Okay. So the front setback, front yard, and we'll get to side yard and, and all this. So I cleaned it up. Which now includes overhangs, uncovered steps and stoops and gutters. But does not include awnings. So you'll see that same exact wording because it was all mumbo jumbo. It was all different in front, setbacks, yards, side setback, side yard, rear yard, rear setback. So I changed all of it to be all the same. I also changed grocery store.
Yep. Under hotel motel condominiums, it says, should the word operational be changed to open?
Jeff, do they mean two different things?
That's a good question. I don't, I'm not sure. I mean, my, my initial reaction is I think they're synonyms, but.
I, I don't see.
Well, we could have as open and operational. They're open and they're operating. If you wanted to add the word open.
Will we do this?
I was just going to say, something that is operational may not be open, but something that is open is certainly operational. So for what that's worth.
Okay. I know that we inserted this indoor/outdoor recreation. I hate all of it. Because when we talk about different things that are allowed, it, it does not include most of this, and I don't think that this is our intent. I think we need to have a future conversation on what our definition is indoor/outdoor recreation. Because some of this would be allowed, I believe, in some zoning districts where it's mentioned that it is not appropriate at all. So I just think that we need to revisit that at a later date.
That sounds good Denise.
Makes sense.
Can I get a list of everything that was deleted tonight, please? At, at, at a time that is convenient. I just want to make sure that we go back and address these things because they're just being wiped out and the language is then gone. I'd like to see where we started because we did have some discussion on that topic. Yes.
Mary Kay, you should have a, a printed document, a physical document with everything.
I, I do, but it's not, there aren't any page numbers or anything. It's very hard to follow along tonight. It's much easier to go by the screen.
We can send you the recording. I just don't know how I'm going to be able to go back and does that make sense? I mean, that what you're asking for is going to be really challenging. I don't know how I'm going to be able to do it without having to go back through it myself.
I can find the two big, the two big sections. Yeah. That's all I'm worried about.
Okay. Mixed use, do we want to, yep, okay, delete.
Oh, I wanted, uh, we need to add retail general use.
Right here.
Did I do that already?
I did that.
Okay. As a definition.
Yep. Okay. And that is everything.
And I'm sure if we read it all again tomorrow, we would be messing with it some more. Yes.
So I have a list of those changes that I need to go through and just clean up. I can make those changes.
Okay.
I will add language for temporary tense.
Uh, under definition or in the code itself?
The code itself.
Okay.
Jeff, the last guy that rubbed his eyes like that wound up telling us we were too much for him.
It was, uh, we're, we're up at our cabin right now and we, I spent much of the day bouncing around on a tube pulled behind our 1964 Evanrude Suite 16. And I think I'm a little too old for that.
So Bo, you're going to clean up everything. We're going to have a new document. Um, we don't have another meeting scheduled, do we?
Not that I know of.
Did we get our calendars out, Cher?
Yep. I'm going to go grab mine.
And Jeff, I'm glad you clarified that you're at your cabin because I was starting to think you had so fully immersed yourself in all things Sister Bay that you were in the climate-controlled eight-person sauna we'll be discussing tomorrow night.
Well, I'm glad you didn't go to the bunker under my house in Appleton. That would have been a little bit more disappointing. Now, this is, this is the bunker room of the cabin built in 1971.
Beautiful.
Looks better that way.
Okay, so what did you come up with?
About the 30th or the 31st.
What, what days of the week are they?
Monday or Tuesday.
I can do Monday. Is that? Oh yeah, because the board is Plan Commission, regular Plan Commission is tomorrow, so there's nothing. Bo, can you make all those changes by Monday? I'd be willing to help you and go over it with you also.
Um, yeah, that, that's fine. I can do that.
Okay. All right. So Monday at six o'clock for final review and then to move on to public hearing.
I'm good.
Okay, okay. And that was the 30th, you said, Rob?
Yes.
Okay. All right, excellent.
I'm going to try and. Either want me, but I am not available that evening, but I don't imagine I'm needed that evening anyway.
That's going to be a final review. I don't think that'll be a big deal. Denise, I'm going to try and get these changes done before the Plan Commission meeting tomorrow night. I'm going to just try and earmark as much of my time tomorrow to get this done.
Okay, okay, sounds great. All right. Thank you, everybody. Is there a motion to adjourn at 7:47? I moved. Motion by Shumway.
Second.
Second by Zoski. All those in favor respond with an I.
I.
An I. Opposed? Carried. See y'all tomorrow night.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Good evening, everyone.
You too, Jeff.